Turn my microphone off. That clock's a little fast. My clock's at five o'clock, so we're right on the nose. Uh, welcome. Nice to see a big crowd here tonight. We don't usually get crowds like this. Uh, we're gonna start this evening with Pastor Scott Johnson leading us in our invocation. If you'd please stand. Thank you, Scott.
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you for this council meeting tonight. We thank you for your love and kindness, your grace and your mercy, God. I ask that you guide us and lead us and direct us, Lord. Let the hearts and the minds be on one accord. Let us love and not judge. Let us encourage and not discourage one another. I ask for your favor, your grace, your guidance, your mercy and your blessings over this city, Lord. Bless this council, Lord. Bless the ones who are burned out but still trying to come to a sensible resolve for all the people that are in this city. Bless every family that's represented here, Lord. Lift up broken hearts and bowed down heads and broken spirits. And we know that if you just breathe on this, God, everything will change. I pray, God, for just peace and understanding for our first responders, all of our educators and our children and everyone in the city, Lord. Continue to lift up the parents that are burying their children, Lord. Lift up those who are struggling, Lord. Continue to strengthen us, God. We thank you so much. Bless the city council, Lord, and bless everyone in this room. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin our study session this evening with some presentations, and I will come over here Well, unfortunately, we have another retirement to take care of. Cheryl Stoffert, would you come up here, please? Cheryl? Oh, she can't do that. Here she comes.
Are you? You sure you want me to?
Yes. Well, she didn't hesitate. Cheryl began employment with the City of Cape as a communications operator on May 1st, 1995. When she first started, our communications center was a small, little bitty three console unit in the old police station. I remember seeing that. It wasn't very comfortable when there was it.
It was tight.
Only two of those consoles were operational in 1995. Communications worked from this small confined space until Fire Station Number Three was constructed in 2008. But that was how many years there? That's a lot of years, thirteen years in that little hole. At which time, communications moved to the basement of that building. They grew from a three console unit to a six console unit. On January 28th, 2012, Cheryl was promoted Communications Manager. And that unit has grown over the years and are now staffed with four lead communications officers and a 12 to 16 full and part-time communications officers. Cheryl has been responsible for supervising the overall operations of the 911 Communications Center ever since her promotion and has served as liaison between police, fire and many other area agencies regarding emergency communications and dispatching. Cheryl says the biggest improvement she's seen over the years is the computer-aided dispatch, the CAD software and the ability to locate wireless 911 callers. Communications didn't receive wireless cellphone calls when she started in 1995. The City of Cape Girardeau, the Cape Girardeau Fire Department, the Cape Girardeau Police Department would like to thank Cheryl for her 23 years of dedicated service as a 911 dispatcher and communications supervisor to our city. It's 23 years of being that calm, cool and collected voice on the other end of the phone when people needed help the most. Thank you, Cheryl, for your years of service and best wishes on your retirement. We're not gonna lie to you. The flag says, "An appreciation and recognition of over 23 years of loyal and faithful service to the City of Cape Girardeau presented this 20th Day of September 2018 by the City of Cape Girardeau in honor of the time of Cheryl Stoffert's service to the 911 Communications Department, May 1st, 1995 to September 28th, 2018." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You wanna say anything?
No.
No? You're a communicator.
From the other side of the radio.
From the other side. I understand. We have a statement of support for the Garden Reserve. Excellent. How are you?
Good, sir.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you, sir.
The City of Cape Girardeau recognizes the Garden Reserve are essential to the strength of our nation and the well-being of community. In the highest American dish in the patriotic men and women of the Garden Reserve serve voluntarily and in an honorable and vital profession. They train to respond to their community and their country in the time of need. They deserve the support of every segment of our society. If these volunteer forces are to continue to serve our nation, increased public understanding is required for the essential role of the Garden Reserve in preserving our national security. Therefore, we join other employers in pledging that we fully recognize, honor and comply with the Uniformed Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act. We will provide our managers and supervisors with the tools they need to effectively manage those employees who serve in the Garden Reserve. We appreciate the values, the leadership, the unique skills service members bring to the workforce and will encourage opportunities to employ guardsmen, reservists and transitioning service members and veterans. We will continually recognize and support our country's service members and their families in peace, crisis and in war. Sir, I appreciate it.
Sir, thank you very much. I just want to go on to say, uh, this came to our attention last year, in addition to being the area chairman for a force for the Garden Reserve, I'm also the family assistant specialist for the Missouri National Guard Family Program. And last year, uh, the National Guard sent the 1137th Military Police Company to Montano Bay, Cuba. Uh, those units are out of Kennett, Jackson and Donovan Reserve. And of that deployment, six of the people there were members of the Cape Police Force. And how Chief Blair worked around the loss of manpower like that, I still don't know.
It was amazing.
Very admirable. And, uh, we represented Chief Blair with an award for ESGR for that. And, uh, also appreciated him signing the statement of support for his office and I certainly appreciate you signing on behalf of the City of Cape.
You're welcome. Thank you for all you did.
Thank you, sir.
I also have a proclamation this evening about National Recovery Month. You coming down here, too? I mean, you be the man, sir.
Yeah.
Whereas substance use has a devastating and far-reaching effect on all communities. And whereas behavioral health is essential to overall health and wellness, not only does it affect the individual, but the well-being of families and communities, whereas substance use recovery is a process that occurs through multiple pathways of recovery-oriented systems of care. It is essential to educate citizens on recognizing the signs of mental and substance use disorders and managing the effect of these conditions by guiding those in need to report the treatment, recovery and support services. And whereas community involvement plays an integral role in spreading the message of recovery and education aids in reducing the stigma of substance abuse disorders. And whereas the Gibson Recovery Center in Cape Girardeau, a National Recovery Month, aimed to educate community about prevention, recovery and treatment to support those in need of services. And whereas the theme for this year's Recovery Month is join the voices of recovery, invest in health, home, purpose and community. And whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance abuse disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas we celebrate long-term recovery and recognize the dedication of those who provide prevention, treatment and recovery support, now therefore be it resolved that I, Bob Fox, Mayor of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, be hereby proclaim the month of September as National Recovery Month. An urge each individual in our community to take time to celebrate the gains made by those in recovery and join the voices in recovery and acknowledging that prevention works, treatment is effective and people do recover.
And I was, uh, really happy to be at the, uh, at the end of the parade at Campahaw last Saturday and see a lot of people there and a lot of people that have recovered and are contributing to society and backworking. It'd be great.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Oh, you want me to say something? Sure. Uh, well, I mean, uh, as a city council member, I agree, I'm in agreement with the proclamation, but also in my, uh, full-time employment, I work for the Gibson Recovery Center and we get to see day in, day out, the, uh, the work that we do and how it affects people's lives. We do appreciate the city and the community of, of Cape Girardeau at large for their support and, uh, thank you.
We now have a Keep Cape Beautiful Committee presentation.
Oh, I guess I should start that, too.
You do?
Yeah. Um, so as the new, uh, the newest member to the council, I, one of the things I, I didn't realize was that, uh, we had to be liaison to, uh, all the various committees in the, uh, city. And, um, uh, Keep Cape Beautiful was one of the committees that I was, uh, assigned to and I went to, uh, I missed the first meeting and I, I was able to go to the, to the last meeting and I really enjoyed, um, all of the, um, the conversation around, um, you know, not something that I don't think we talk enough about. Uh, we talk about a lot of the other issues in the city, but we do have overall a, uh, a beautiful city. And, um, this committee works to, to keep it that way and to recognize, um, uh, those businesses and other, uh, properties in the city that, uh, that do a, an extra special job of, uh, taking care of themselves and, uh, um, enhancing the overall landscape of our city. So just a little bit of history, uh, Julia, thanks for the notes on this. So Keep Cape Beautiful is a remake of the, uh, Keep Southeast Missouri Beautiful and obtained its own affiliation with Keep America Beautiful in 2012. Uh, the, this was with the encouragement of, uh, former, uh, City Councilwoman Loretta Schneider and, uh, past Mayor Harry Rediger. So, um, part of, one of the things that this committee does is an annual litter survey. Um, they, um, unfortunately, I wasn't able to go this year, but I know that group works hard on it. They pile in bands and go around to the city and kinda look around at, uh, what our streets and our neighborhoods look like and they compile those things. And I think that, um, Becky Mockerman, the chairperson of that committee, is gonna ta- uh, talk a little more about that. So, thank you, Becky.
Yeah, and we're glad to have you in our committee.
Thank you.
Uh, the City of Cape Girardeau's Keep Cape Beautiful Committee conducted the annual litter index evaluation during the late summer of 2018. The litter index was performed using city council member wards, of which there are six. The city's bus was u-, which needs some better cushions. The city's bus-
Needs better cushions.
-was used to transport all of us who were able to attend the four separate evaluation sessions. The committee felt that where possible, the wards were broken down into eight to 10 sections, which typically comprise street crossings and would be easy to evaluate and compare from year to year. The following, we, I, you all have a copy, is a compilation of the scores for each ward and section. And we've done this for four years. The summary, uh, we feel that our trips around town to the different wards has increased the cleanliness, the landscape. Uh, we worry, uh, still a lot about cigarette butts, which end up, if you notice, if you're going, you turn out of Schnucks and you're going south, they're lined up in the cracks of King's Highway. So we're still working on that and hopefully if you have any suggestions, please let me know. Thank you.
I will note that the, the overall index, uh, for the City of Cape in 2015 was 2.2 and, uh, that equates to, uh, where's the little scale here? Uh, still very little litter, but it's gone to an average of 1.48 in 2018. So that's a vast, vast improvement. And I also might add that I'm sure everybody's aware, Architectural Digest says we are the most beautiful city of Missouri. So, that's good, too. So, thank you for all your work in keeping Cape beautiful. Uh, we now have a developer contract experience, uh, discussion on how we've improved and are hoping to improve even more in that area. So Alex, you wanna start off?
I tried to keep this presentation low-key because I'm a very humble person, but word has obviously gotten out that I'm presenting tonight. As well as our survey results. So I appreciate everyone. A little preface with, uh, the beginning part of my presentation. The city manager had asked myself and Development Services, what are things that we do that seem more administrative in function? What are things that we're, the way we're interacting with developers and customers, what are ways that we can streamline our business interactions in that manner? So what I did was I went to our division heads and I said, "Here's our directive. What are some of your thoughts?" And so this is our initial brainstorm of some ideas that we came up with. And one disclaimer I, I wanna provide to everyone is none of these ideas have been shared with our city attorney yet. So, nothing was off his, I stole his buzzer, it's gone. So when he hears things, he thinks, "I don't know if we can do that. He's not gonna interrupt me yet. We'll vet him with him later." We just wanna initially share some thoughts that we had had. So these are some initial thoughts that we had had. So minor subdivisions, we actually define minor subdivisions differently than subdivisions, but we treat them the same way in our code. So a minor subdivision according to our code is a subdivision of a lot into four lots or less. And it's treated the same. What we would like to see, if our attorney lets us, is potentially treat them a little differently. With subdivisions that are not as complicated, so some stipulations that, according to current code, they can't have proposed improvements in city streets right-of-way, they can't have proposed provisions for public land in any of the areas, they can't adversely affect adjoining parcels and they can't conflict with our zoning code. So if it checks all those boxes, some communities call them, uh, land splits. If it checks all those boxes and it's just a little land split or a minor subdivision, we'd like to explore ways which we might be able to handle that administratively. That way it's not going through P&amp;Z or Advisory Board as well as our city council. So that was one initial thought. Next, fences. And fences, I gotta tell you, fences are fun. So, exceptions for fences on through lots. And if you're not familiar with what a through lot is, a through lot is, say, in a residential property, if they have street frontage in the front of their property, then they have street frontage in the rear of their property. So they have a street in their backyard and a street in their front yard. For them, they have a front yard and they have a backyard. The way our code defines it is because they have street frontages on two streets that don't intersect, they have two front yards. Well, have that conversation with someone that comes in, 'cause they hired a, a fence contractor, and you gotta tell them, "Well, you have two front yards, so your fence in your backyard can't exceed three feet." I've had conversations like that and conversations to go, "Well, I mow my lawn once a week. I mow my lawn on Monday. I mow my front lawn, I go out my front door and I mow my front lawn on Monday. That way all my neighbors that can see my front lawn know it's cut. On Tuesday, I mow my backyard. I go out my back door and I mow it. That way it's taken care of." And they say, "In what scenario have I mowed two front lawns?" I get it. I get it. But according to our code, the ways defined, they have two front yards. So, we allow them to do it, but they have to go through and get an exception. And it just, it just adds to the time. So we're hoping maybe we could change that, alleviate a lot of the frustration that we're getting from residents and allow us to say, "It makes sense that you have two front yards technically, but this by character is really your backyard and we can allow, you know, up to a six-foot fence in your backyard." Uh, a little more on fences, so we also regulate height and percent openness. Um, a recent example of this is a, uh, a property of Perry, Perryville Row. So this is a, an older home with great historic character and it has a front yard fence that matches the historic character, very ornate, uh, very opulent, but it had gotten in somewhat disrepair and a portion of it had to be repaired. And the portion that had to be repaired rose to the level of needing a fence permit. So we reviewed it and the, the original fence was not 50% open. And it didn't make sense for us to require it to be 50% open, even though our code said it had to be. Because it made more sense that it matched the character of the existing fence and it's been there for who knows how long and it's never been an issue. So, again, we allow it. We just make them apply for an exception and go through the process and they get it. But maybe we might be able to change our codes, that way it expedites that process. Administrative relief, this is something that is extremely helpful for us. Right now, administrative relief applies to parking, it applies to lighting and it applies to landscaping. I gotta tell you, with developers that come in and they wanna invest in areas that are already developed, infill developments that they're looking at, established neighborhoods or established commercial areas, they wanna bring life back into a lot that's been vacant for a while. They have to meet current codes and it's a challenge for them, especially when it comes to things like parking. And this has been great for us to be able to use. It allows us to have a variance of up to 10% of what the code requires, so reduction of parking by 10% or landscaping or lighting by 10%. It just gives us a little bit of flexibility, that way we're not so rigid when we're dealing with people looking to invest in the community. So what we'd like to do is expand that a little bit with buffer yards, driveways and bike racks as they apply to restaurants. A good example of bike racks in restaurants, for whatever reason, our city code allows bike racks to count against, uh, parking requirements for almost every development except for restaurants. Why that is, I have no idea. But what we can do, it, with every other development except for restaurants currently, is they can provide two bike racks and they can reduce their parking by one space, up to 10% of their parking requirement. So we think it makes sense that parking and bike racks should go hand-in-hand with restaurants, too. We had a development on, uh, Broadway that was struggling, it was one of those infill examples, and they were wanting to put a restaurant there where previously it was developed where that wasn't clientele, but it made sense in that area and it made sense because Broadway can be pretty pedestrian-oriented, that they provide bike racks. But according to code, we're gonna need to amend that if we wanna be able to provide And transfer signage square feet. So, for commercial zoning as an example, we allow wall signage based on per linear feet of building space, street frontage. So an example of how that plays out is, a good recent one is One City, just applied for an exception for this exact, exact thing. So they're allowed wall signs as long as they have street frontage. And we calculate how much square footage of a wall sign they can have based on per linear feet of building space they have with their wall front. Uh, One City on Independence wanted a wall sign on their western portion of their building, which makes sense, because you're heading east on Independence, it's prominent, you could see it, you're heading toward the river, you know what that building is. And we allow for that, but they have to apply for an exception to get it. So what they do is they actually transfer, we're not giving them extra wall space, they transfer, they allow square footage based on their linear feet of street frontage and it just gives them the option of where they wanna place that wall signage that they're providing. So that currently goes to P&amp;Z and typically those get a permit. L&amp;Is are another thing. Currently, they're, they're first reviewed by our city engineer to make sure that it makes sense, it doesn't conflict with anything engineering or even public works may be concerned about. We also take it to our Development Review Group, our DRG as we call it, and we let all the departments weigh in, making sure it doesn't pose a hazard or unnecessary liability. As long as it doesn't rise to any of those levels, we just have them sign one of these instruments, an L&amp;I that holds us harmless and we allow them to do it, things like awnings that would extend over, that way if awning fell or something, it's not the city's responsibility. We're thinking that might be able to be administrative function. And then finally, contractor licenses. So, we currently reciprocate with cities that reciprocate with us. If a contractor comes in from a city that accepts our contractor licenses, we say, "You're good, you have a contractor license from them, they take ours, you're okay." But if a contractor comes in from a city that has the same testing that we require, they just don't happen to reciprocate with us. We make them go through our testing requirements and it's time, it's money for them and it's time and money for us, 'cause anytime it's staff time, it's also money for us. So our building official thought it would make sense if we reciprocated, as long as we could verify they pass all the tests from this other city and they're currently licensed. And then I also wanted to provide you an example we're doing tonight. This is something very in character with ideas that I just shared. Um, this is something that you'll be considering tonight. It was brought to you by, uh, our city attorney and our city planner. And this is an amendment to Chapter 25, which is our development code, Section 1227, subsection E, which requires for any development, a trust indenture if they plan to provide common land. So, I asked our planner what that meant, 'cause I don't know what that meant, and he's like, "Well, I mean," he's like, "We make them do HOAs or some type of order trustees if they have common land." And I said, "Well, that makes a lot more sense now." So, we would like more flexibility with, with what we do when we have common land like that. You know, not in every scenario it makes sense that we have to establish an HOA. Some it might, but others, we just don't wanna be, uh, tied down to having to come up with that as our final solution. So that's that decision tonight. Were there any questions on that before we transition into our survey?
Outside of HOAs, putting together trust for, for that type of common, what other options are there?
Eric, are you familiar with other, other than HOAs at least?
Well, certainly one of the, uh, other options that would be plain would be to have an individual on it. And, uh, and that's got a lot of benefits to having a corporation be the owner of it because we've had situations where, uh, where the people in the area were not interested in maintaining their corporation. And then the city really has a problem trying to go after a defunct corporation to get them to maintain some property when they could go after an individual. And so staff just wanted the, uh, flexibility in a situation where a subdivision association's appropriate to use that and other situations to, uh, require an individual to maintain ownership. to use that and other situations to require an individual to maintain ownership.
Okay. Moving on to our customer survey. So, this is something that's been a goal for ours for quite a while. We solicit feedback from our development community in a lot of different facets. I hold a quarterly roundtable. I hold individual meetings with developers. Our building official has done that as well. Our development review group is also an opportunity for developers to come in and get our opinions on certain projects they may have or share different ideas. But this was something that we had been wanting to do, and it was championed by our building official, Anna Kangas. She put it together, and the method she used was she went back, and we had to do this manually. And we're looking for a way to streamline how we do it, but it was somewhat labor-intensive. Is we went back from January 1 to the end of July of 2018, and we polled anybody that got a building permit or a certificate of occupancy. Sometimes you'll hear us say C of O's. That means certificate of occupancy. And we sent them a link to an online survey and asked them, "Please, to provide their feedback on their experience" with whatever interaction they had with us. So, polling those resulted in 250 different contractors, developers, or property owners that we had interactions with. From that so far, and we have closed it at this point, we've received 18 responses. Now, 3% response rate is not fantastic. I'm not bragging to you about that. But, this is a starting point for us. It's something we actually plan to do quarterly for a while to see what type of participation we get and see what type of feedback we get. And depending on that, we may scale it back or we may just keep it quarterly for quite a while. So, it's a starting point for us, and I'm encouraged that we even got 18 to start with. So we had, and it was just eight questions. We just had eight questions. We didn't want to be labor-intensive or intimidating to anyone. And I'll, I'll show you six of the responses right on the slide. So the first one was just kind of demographics. Which best describes your role? A majority of the people that participated were contractors. The next were property owners. And then we had design professionals or drafters. And this says, "What was the nature of your interaction with development services staff?" And if you can read it and you're doing quick math, you're like, "Well, that adds up way more than 18 responses." They could actually pick more than one in this scenario. So, if they had a plan review within those six and a half months, or if they had an inspection, they could check up. And this, "Please rate your overall experience with development services." We don't like seeing the numbers to the right. This is, this is good feedback for us, and this is something that we certainly want to improve on. But we are, we were at least encouraged that the majority of the responses were very satisfied and then satisfied. But this is good feedback that we want to learn more about. Did you receive timely service? Encouraged to see a majority of people did say that they had received timely service. Were you treated with respect? And, I was very encouraged to see this because I take this very seriously. We are a department that, unfortunately, we have the unenviable position at times where we have to tell people no. And the city manager has created the culture, and I've tried to reinforce that, that if we're saying no, we should follow it up with, "But what can we do to help you get to where you need to go?" Or something close to it. Or we can help provide some additional ideas that might help get, get you closer to where you need to be. And we can do all those things by treating people with respect. And we have some excellent staff. I've actually learned a ton from being here, from our staff. And this is definitely reflective of the culture that I've experienced here. And then finally, "Were you provided with useful information for your project?" All but one said that they had. One said that it wasn't applicable to the interaction they had. And then we also did have two open-ended questions at the end. It doesn't translate well on PowerPoint presentations, but we did provide you with those. So if you guys have any follow-up questions for me, given responses that you would read from those, please just get with me, and I'm happy to discuss them.
The one thing I would say is, it seems like the business owners and developers that I've talked to, this has obviously been a hot-button topic. And I'm not discouraged by the percentage, but I think from where I sit, I'd like to get more people involved in the survey. Quite honestly, I think from where I sat is, the calls that I get, I was pleasantly surprised at where some of the numbers were. You still get a lot of, in the open-ended questions, you still get a lot of adding a plan reviewer. And we know that, that that process is still being improved. But, almost all of, I want to say, and empowering you all to be able to make quicker decisions for business owners is something that helps business owners be able to do business in Cape better, which is, I think, what we've talked about as a council, is, is our ultimate objective and the culture that we want to push in Cape. And almost all of the, almost all of the enhancing pieces that Eric has yet to sign off on are call, are stuff that I get calls about, you know? So, and, so I'm really pleased, and I appreciate staff and the work that's gone into that. And I love the idea of being able to monitor and look at this quarterly, you know, just like we do with, with Chief Blair in his department, too. So I want to, I want to tell Development Services, thank you. And I, I really like the direction. Thank you.
Any other questions, Val?
Well, did the enhancement or the ideas come about after that, after the survey was taken, or?
I think they were actually just before.
Yeah.
The survey was going on. It was really just being monitored by Anna Kangas, our building official that initiated it. It was just a Google Docs survey that she had done, and she was kind of handling the results and then shared it with myself and Deputy City Manager and City Manager.
What I'm getting at is, you know, where there was some dissatisfaction expressed. Have you begun talks or about, you know, where to go from there?
The intent of the survey is definitely to listen to it and pick areas in which we think are very feasible to do. And we, we didn't hesitate to do a survey, but we wanted to make sure we were at a point with our workload to where we would be able to respond to the feedback. Because we don't want to discourage people from participating in a survey if they don't feel as if they're being listened to. So that's certainly our goal.
Mayor and Councilwoman Kinder, to your question as well. A lot of the things that staff identified as potential code changes are things that are sources of frustration for not only the development community, but also staff. And I think that's really how the list was generated. Staff knows what, what is frustrating and what, you know, when a developer has to go to P and Z for an exception or something. So I think that really was the impetus for the list that was generated and what you saw tonight. So, we'll continue to monitor the feedback that we get through the survey and hopefully through that process identify other things that we could change as well.
In this, I don't know if this question would just add even more to the, to the pile, or it might be too cumbersome. But, you know, if I call, I don't know, one of the people I do, but Charter, and I get off the phone with them, they're gonna send me usually an email with a link to a survey asking how their customer service was. I'm just wondering if that's something that maybe we can look at doing on some of these bigger things, the plan, you know, the plan reviews and some of the things like that. If we can say, "Hey, you know, can we send you a link to a survey? We want to continue to, to, you know, always be monitoring our customer service and see what we can do better." I just don't know if maybe that is a potential option moving forward as opposed to... I don't know that there's anything wrong with doing quarterly surveys, but then you have to wait a quarter, and that information could be three months old by the time. It might, might be more helpful, and we might get better feedback if we're getting it more immediate.
Good suggestion.
Good question. I know we're hampered with planning, you know, with budget, but we discussed more about adding another plan review. I know we have some part-time help. Could you maybe talk about that? Because it seems like, as far as the open-ended questions, there was, there seemed to be a lot about that.
Yeah. What the city council did do with our most recent budget that was passed is they did support, more than we ever have, our part-time review. They supported two days per month for part-time plan review. And we thought that that was a great starting point to see with our ebbs and flows of our workload, to be able to leverage that throughout the year. And we, we didn't want to commit to adding staff personnel with benefits and all that until we really gauged what our workload was going to be like. And I think that's, it's been a great asset to date that we've had that since we started our budget cycle. And we'll certainly report back at the end of the year with our experience with the resources you gave us.
Have you had any discussions that are the quarterly developers' roundtable about some of these items you mentioned tonight?
Not, not these specific items, but these are all frustrations that we've heard repeated.
Any other questions?
Electronic plan review. How is that, is pushing going with that?
It's catching on quick. We are getting a lot of electronic submissions. And I, I hoped it would go the way it's going, and it is. Everybody's really enjoying it. We're getting a lot more electronic submissions, like our paper. Our, our building official, Anna, that really helped champion that entire conversion. She's actually counting pages of paper that we've saved, and we've saved design professionals. So she's gonna, at some point, she'll report that number to you, but it's, it's going very well.
And that helps timing this as well.
Absolutely. And from a management tool, I don't have to go to the 12 different staff members to see what projects we have in the queue and what status they're in. I can just pull it up on my computer, and if the developer calls me, I could quickly say, "Here's your project. Here's the status of it." And let me just talk to somebody and give you a timeline.
The only other question I, and we had it, we kind of brought it up whenever, when new businesses are starting or coming to town. Can you kind of touch on, I felt like we had a, Scott, we kind of were, discussed what that would look like, a change to be maybe ahead of it, be more opening as far as what the process would be?
We, we've looked at some examples of some flyers, and one of them very detailed, and one of them more for smaller businesses. We haven't fully developed a proposal yet for that customized to Cape, but it's, it's something that we do have in the queue. We thought it was really important that initially we were responding to some, to, to the developers directly of things that they were concerned with. I don't know, Molly, if you have anything to add on that?
Yes, that's definitely something that we want to continue to improve on. Some of the difficulty that we encounter is when we find out a business is coming. Sometimes that's not until they apply for their business license, and they've already secured a location. And, you know, and then the clock's already ticking on when they need their signage and their grease interceptor inspected and those sorts of things. So we're trying to find a way where we can intervene sooner in that process, before they find a location, before they make commitments. They have some conversations with us so we can get all the permits and things they need in the works as quickly as possible. So it's really, and that's something that we can work with on some of our partners, too, to find out where, where we can intercept those people, whether that's Marla through Old Town Cape, or the Chamber and Magnet, and try to intercept some of those people before they come to us for their licenses and permits.
Okay. Good.
Good. All right. Thank you, sir. I'm gonna make a little deviation in our study session agenda here, and I'm gonna allow our P and Z chair to give his report first before we get into communications report. He has another meeting to go to, and would appreciate the expediency.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. P and Z met last week and had a number of items, few items on our agenda. We had a wall, a wall sign exception, which was just discussed for 231 North Main. Kyle Schott from Catholic Charities of Southern Missouri requested that wall sign to be placed on the south building elevation. That was voted to approve that. Nine in favor with no one in opposition. And I will say, we get probably, if I had to guess, I'd say somewhere between eight to 12 of these every year. That could easily be handled administratively and not have to go before P and Z. We also had some preliminary plat approvals. We voted seven in favor, zero in opposition with two abstaining, Mr. Griezer and Mr. Skinner, to the Deer Run Estates preliminary plat. Voted nine in favor, zero in opposition to the Walnut Street Extension Right-Away Dedication Plat. And then voted nine in favor, zero in opposition to recommend approval of the complete street policy. And that's all of the business we had before. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on any of those.
Miami, questions? If not, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Communications and reports. Who wants to go first?
I had the opportunity to go to a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting. The Parks Department here in the city of Cape Girardeau just constantly is punching above the weight of our city. I mean, we've got wonderful facilities, beautifully landscaped parks, and they just keep adding additional beautiful qualities to what we're doing. And I think it goes really hand-in-hand with the development discussion that we just had. Cities like Cape Girardeau are fighting for future employees and fighting for new residents and fighting for new businesses. And so, by having a beautiful park system, we, we really benefit, and it's really good to help us recruit additional employees, additional residents, additional businesses. And so I'm just always really, really proud whenever I go to those Parks, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meetings because you get to hear about the splash pad that's being built in Capaha Park and all the, the really great improvements that are happening in the city. So, when you guys are driving around and looking at different things that are happening, or even just contemplating the cleanup after the Simo District Fair, that's always something that lands on the Parks Department. So, just if you guys ever see somebody part of that, that's definitely a great opportunity. And I definitely wanted to give a shout-out. Spaghetti Day, which is a pretty favorite event in the city, is November the 8th. So mark your calendars and get hungry.
Anybody else?
Go ahead. I just, the mayor and I sit as liaisons to the, I guess, board members on Magnet. And I just wanted to mention that, two pieces. Right now in Cape, if you look, we've got a lot of, a lot of good dirt moving in Cape. Sugar Fire opened the other day. Capaha Splash Pad's being worked on. Rosati's is coming to town. Mary Jane's, Buddy's Rolled Ice Cream, Krispy Kreme. And you look at these things, and from a development, yes, you know, everybody wants to talk about manufacturing. We have a lot of jobs that are currently open in, in our area. And, but for these outside businesses to come to our community is a very good sign of, of the strong economy that we've got.
That's a lot of jobs in every one of those businesses, too.
Absolutely. And the sales tax dollars, with us being a sales tax city. So when I see those, in my mind, when I see those businesses, yes, they're not residents, but they're tax dollars that help us for our parks, our streets, and those things. So, it's not always so gloom and doom with, with what's, what's being developed and things in Cape. And I think we need to celebrate that some when we go through our day-to-day works. Secondly, I want to mention this Saturday, a foundation that's near and dear to my heart. And I sit on the board, is, I want to invite everybody. It's Frank the Fighter Foundation. It's on Saturday. My nephew passed away after two weeks of being on Earth in 2014. And in his honor, his mom and dad started a foundation to help other NICU families. And it's a very simple concept to just pay it forward to help them with hotels, meals, and other things to help them out. We have one big event each year, and that's to raise funds to that. So, with the pending weather and a call to Grant Day, we changed it from Melanas to doing it inside at the Concourse Building, where we have games and lunch and, and different things for kids and family members to come out. So from 11:00 to 1:30 on Saturday.
You really did call Grant?
I, I text Ken Lykins, and she did.
Okay.
That's all I got, Mayor.
Okay. Victor?
I just wanted to do a shout-out to the Police Department. I spent eight days at the fair. And in my former role, I tend to watch police officers doing their jobs. And I observed our, Cape Girardeau Police Department doing their job. And I observed our, Cape Girardeau Police Department doing their jobs exceptionally well. They were constantly in view. They were moving around. There was, I only heard of one disturbance while I was there that they handled quickly. And I applaud our police department for their professionalism and their appearance at the fair. Thank you, Chief, for your department.
Thank you.
Anything down here?
Well, I just wanted to jump on, on board with what Dan was talking about regarding Spaghetti Day because it's actually put on by the Parks and Rec Foundation, which is a privately funded organization that helps raise money to enhance all the things going on at, in Parks and Rec. So when you go to the Osage Center or wherever, there may be a special piece of equipment that is not funded by tax dollars, but actually funded by money raised by the foundation. And so spaghetti, spaghetti day is a big part of the foundation being able to, to do a lot of special things. So definitely go have some spaghetti if you consider it, you know, consider sponsoring or your, your, your business, you know, being a part of it too. So just wanted to plug that.
It's one more reason not to cook.
Yep.
It's the way my wife looks at it. I've got several things to report on. After our last meeting, I, I drove to Kansas City for a mayor's panel on workforce issues at the Governor's Conference on Workforce Development. I was on that panel with the mayor of Kansas City, the mayor of Jefferson City, the mayor of Springfield, and it was a, it was really fun and very informative and, and I was honored to be there and represent Cape Girardeau and Southeast Missouri. It was a, it was a neat deal. I had the honor of doing some art jury and attending the reception at the Council of the Arts. Julia, you did that little jurying, did thing last year, and that's, that was a lot more difficult than what I thought. You know, it's one thing to look at art when you're looking at, say, photographs or you're looking at oils or you're looking at watercolors or you're looking at sculpture, but to look at everything and, you know, you've got all these different things and you've got to put it in one big group. And then you've got to pick three winners and, you know, three runners up. It's difficult. And I'm glad I didn't know who the artists were. That would have made it even more difficult. But it was fun. I will tell you, the aquatics committee heard presentations from three consultants and we selected a consultant. The contract should be ready for approval at our next, our first meeting in October. We just couldn't quite get that done with, with everything else going on, so that's moving along very well. Scott and I gave another presentation about what's going on in the city to the Chamber Grow Strong Group. Saturday before I left for various meetings, I, I did get to attend the Addiction Recovery Walk in Capaha Park. At the end of the walk, I didn't walk. And it's, it's a neat deal to see people giving their testimony about recovery and about what it's meant for their family and what it's meant for, for the community and for them. And it's, it's pretty overpowering sometimes when you hear those stories. Sunday to Tuesday, Scott and I and Gail, I guess, were the three that were there at the MML Conference in Branson. This is Missouri Municipal League. There were, I attended a session on trust, which is, was very helpful. Our keynote speaker was a guy named Michael Bazell, who's an expert on computer crime and identity theft. And boy, did he open some eyes when he gives this live presentation and he says, what you're going to see here is going to be live and it's going to be, you know, maybe, I give you an example. He pulled up a, one of the employees there at the hotel, pulled up her Twitter account and just started talking to her on the Twitter account. And I mean, it was, he can get into anything, anywhere, anytime. I mean, this guy was a FBI agent and, and he's an expert on computers and on identity and, and gave us some good ideas about, about how do you protect our city? You know, how you talk to your employees and, and some do's and don'ts and even your personal information. I mean, I know there's got to be people in here that have suffered identity theft. It, it just happens constantly now. And it was a very, very good presentation. I, we attended the Home Dock Cities Association meeting. These are cities who have casinos and basically just discussed information that affects all of us cities who have casinos and the problems we may occur and legislation that may be occurring affecting us. That was very good. I led, to leave the MML meeting and go to Davenport, Iowa, early Tuesday morning for a MRCTI meeting, which is Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative. And it too is a very good meeting. And it's, it's, it's a group of mayors in 85 different cities in 10 states along the Mississippi River who are affected by, by the river commerce, by the navigation. It could be recreation, it could be flood issues. We heard from the general who's the head of Corps of Engineers for the whole Mississippi River Basin from Minnesota all the way to New Orleans. We heard from different legislators about different issues that affect cities around the river. And we also heard ways to fund and raise money for projects along the river, whether it be a park project or whether it be in some area of your city that's, that's, that needs development. But they talked about infrastructure and navigation and flood control and conservation and water quality and the nutrients that go into the river because so many towns still use the river for their drinking water. So it's a, and it's, it's, MRCTI is lobbied on our behalf to do a lot of things that, that affect cities along the river. One of the things they, you know, they've done this year, Caruthersville, is getting a new flood wall from the Corps of Engineers. And they wouldn't have got that without MRCTA lobbying on their behalf with Corps of Engineers to get some of those things done. So it's, it's a big deal. Next year's meeting's in Memphis. It's a little closer, thank goodness. And I think Memphis may be a little more fun than Davenport, Iowa. Nothing against the Quad Cities, but barbecue and blue sounds better than whatever they had in Davenport. Of course, I didn't have the time to do anything anyway because I had to come back here for Constitution Day at Almashotter this morning. And my, I've got two grandkids there, so I could not miss that. And then we had this meeting tonight, so I had to cut out a little early. I, I want to mention also that being at the MML meeting, I know it's difficult for a lot of people to get to regional meetings when they're so far away, but we have a regional meeting in Jackson that the Southeast Missouri, Jackson's hosting the Southeast Missouri Meeting on Thursday, October 25th at the Civic Center, and I think it starts at 5:30. And they're talking about design build and how it works to benefit communities. Scott will be out of town at Purpose Build in Florida, and Molly is going to be on the panel. So I would encourage each of you, if you can, to try to get there and support Jackson and be there at that MML Regional Meeting. It'd be nice if we had a lot of people in Cape there. And I think that kind of ends my long report. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. I will try to be brief. MML just wanted to point out a couple of things. Home Dock Cities, we talked about the, there's a move to put VLT machines in convenience stores and all sorts of things, which really would be opposite of what the Missouri voters voted for, which was they wanted to concentrate gaming in just a few 13 locations. And so it's really an opposite of that. They're talking about the sports betting and what the effect of that is, and they're trying to house that in gaming facilities. And then smoking is a big issue. The Wayfair decision is a big, is a big thing we'll be talking about in the future and talking about at council level, how, how legislature is likely to, to deal with the Wayfair decision and then how does that, how that affects council and, and use tax and things and strategize for us going forward. There was a Prop D proposal. MML voted to endorse Prop, Prop D. That's the raising the gas tax. Other issues that, as you talk to other city managers and other mayors, you hear that are common, municipal court issues who remain a, a large issue for, for cities. The changes in, in the, the state law about municipal court has hampered many cities in the enforcement of their laws, and it's been a, been a big issue. And so that's an issue that we think will continue to be there. Also hearing from a lot of my cohorts that they too are experiencing flat sales tax growth. And so those, that's an issue that's, that's looming and, and one that we're going to need to, to, to look at going forward. Wanted to also note, council, we had provided, over the last few meetings, we had talked about our council goal of improving safety and health of our employees and community. Our staff has provided you with our strategies for that goal. And if you would continue to look through that now that you've heard the reports and we've had some focus on that for the last few meetings, are there things in here that you believe that maybe we shouldn't do anymore? I think it's something we don't do enough as a city is just look at things and say, let's not do that anymore. Are there things here that we need to do more of or less of? So when you have some time, take time to look at that, give me your input. We want to make sure that as we try, have strategies to accomplish the goals that you have for us, that we're doing it the right way. And so if you would review that, I would appreciate it. And I believe that's all I have.
Okay. Nobody else? If not, we'll move on. We've had planning and zoning. Is there anybody here to appear before the council for an item that is not on the agenda this evening? If not, we'll move into our, yes, ma'am?
I don't know what's on the agenda. As of morning, I looked at the web and I didn't see anything.
The agenda was posted yesterday. Yes.
And I called and yesterday I called and said that there was, and maybe that was actually done in this though about Hopper and.
It's on the agenda.
That's not, it is on the agenda.
It is on the agenda. If not, we'll move into regular session. I'll have the call the order for the regular meeting and roll call, please.
Ryan Essex.
Here.
Bob Fox.
Here.
Robbie Guard.
Here.
Victor Gunn.
Here.
Stacy Kinder.
Here.
Shelly Morris absent.
Dan Preston.
Here.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Gunn, second by Mr. Guard. Any discussion? All those in favors?
I'm sorry.
Yes?
Regarding the consent agenda, were they, wanted to remove some items?
We are adopting the agenda, so if you want to change the agenda, you can do that now.
I wanted to pull number six and nine off of the consent agenda.
Okay. Six is the resolution relating to our banking services contract. And nine is the approval of preliminary plat for Deer Run Estates. We'll pull those off the consent agenda. With that change, anything else? If not, all of them in favor of approving agenda with the changes indicated? Aye.
Aye.
Any vote? Motion carries. We have no public hearings tonight. And I'll now entertain comments regarding items on the agenda. And I know there are a lot of people here to talk about one specific thing on the agenda tonight, and that is the P and Z's recommendation for Deer Run Estates plat. Before we get into that, I would like staff to make a couple of comments about that situation and why it came about and why the council has to do what it has to do. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanted to just make some clarifications regarding some items that have been, been shared and there's a little bit of misinformation out there, so I want to make sure that we're really clear on that. I did call a meeting to share with some of the neighbors that had expressed concern regarding development at New Hopper, Old Hopper and Coggy Road during the previous meetings where a second wasn't gotten for that development to move forward. But the developer came back and asked to have a record plat of the residential part of that development. And because that was a, a record plat and the record plat did not have any variances in it, it wasn't required to, and record plats at all aren't required to give notice. So I want to make sure that the, that the neighborhood was aware of that and, and make sure that they were aware of what was going on and have plenty of time to contemplate and talk about it. And so that's the reason I had the meeting. We couldn't have a meeting for everybody, so understood. I decided, had to pick up, I asked them during the meeting to be sure and share with their neighbors, and I think they've done a good job of that. But really was to allow to, to exchange information in order to be fair. The developer was there along with his attorney and his engineer and, and I handed out a copy of the, of the proposed plat, which basically makes 38 single-family home lots, that would be single-family on-grade homes in that R1 area. Because it fits the zoning, really the council has what they have, an administrative obligation to approve that because it meets all of the requirements. When a person buys land in our country, which is a, a right that is, is kind of unique to our country, they have the ability to do with it what, what they want, except where it's restricted by zoning. As long as you meet all of those expectations, then you, you have that right. And that's the reason why, should the council tonight reject that, that it would put the city in a place where they could be sued by the developer because they bought the land with the expectation to be able to use it as it was zoned. So I think that's the explanation that I wanted to make sure you understood. It's, I know that some people don't necessarily agree with that, but that's, that's where we live and that's, that's the way the law is. So I wanted to be really clear about that. During the meeting that we did have that day, there was, there was discussion by the developer about whether or not, what, what was his motive for changing to this plat and the 38 lots, single-family small lots with slab-on-grade homes? And he said, well, he had to use it for something and this was how he wanted to proceed. Several of the neighbors there at that time said, well, we would rather you consider going back to the senior development that was talked about previously. Of course, that would take a rezoning, a part of it. And so he said he would think about it and the neighbors had thought about it and I think some of them gave input to, to the developer. But the developer has applied to, for rezoning of that, which will start at the next planning and zoning meeting in October. I believe it's going to go to the October planning and zoning meeting. If, if everything is there, it will, will go to the October. And, and so it had to start over the process altogether. It'll be funny time, it'll be advertised as, as such, and it will go through that. His intent, he stated, was to be sure that he, he wants to have that senior development that he had planned before. Now then, as I've pointed out in the meeting and I've pointed out regularly, when you make a zoning change, it doesn't, because someone says that's what they're going to do, that doesn't mean that, that nothing else can happen. If they, they can build anything within, that's allowed in that zoning designation. Now then, last time there was talk of, of a nine stories and big, big apartments, those apartments were not, are not allowed at R3. R3 is very limited in what it allows and, and it's primarily duplexes and, and in regular homes. So that's, that's what is planned, but I'd be honest with you, you can change it as long as it is allowed in that, in that R3 zoning. So the reason that the developer wanted to proceed with the record plat tonight was, he has stated, his reason he stated is because he wants to go ahead and start grading that property for development. And the grading plan for the, the 38 homes that he's replatted is similar enough to the other plan that it's, it would be fine for moving ahead with, with the, the grading plan. So, um, just wanted to be clear, I, also in the meeting, there was, uh, there had been some questions about the special road district. And so I invited Mark Phillips, who's the head of the special road district, to be in that meeting. He was there, um, he talked about, uh, he felt like that the, the additional, uh, development would not cause a lot of traffic issues. They've, he said they've had developments, uh, similar to this that have added into, uh, different, uh, roads that they have and on down further on Coggy and, um, didn't feel like it would be a problem with, uh, additional traffic in the peak hour or anything. We both agreed, uh, myself and he, that there are some pretty tight curves there and not many, not much, uh, shoulder. And so if those develop as safety problems, uh, Mark, uh, said that he would work with the city as we've worked in different places like on Bloomfield Road and, uh, could work toward, uh, maybe a new funding of TTF six in the future or something to improve the road, but, uh, they would be willing to be a partner in that. So I wanted to share, share that with you as well. So tonight, again, what is in front of council is, uh, a record plat for a, uh, plats that are, that meet all of our code and all of our requirements. So on our, uh, our city attorney's, uh, recommendation, um, uh, the, the council really needs to approve that, uh, or lay peril to a lawsuit. So I think, uh, just to be blunt about it all, I wanted to get those facts out there. And, uh, is there something I have missed?
You've referred to it a couple of times as a record plat. It is a preliminary plat.
Thank you.
Okay. Molly, is there anything else?
Um, I would just reiterate that the only thing I'm up for consideration this evening is the subdivision of the R1 portion into single family lots. There is no consideration of any change in zoning this evening. And that will be in the future for the R3 portion.
Thank you. Okay. I just wanted clarification of that tonight, so everybody understands where we stand and why we have to do what we have to do based on the law. So if anybody has any comment about the preliminary plat, plat that was approved by P and Z that is before us tonight, I'll now, you can recognize yourself and make a comment. Come on. Will you come up to the mic and identify yourself, please?
My name is Mike Wozniak. I lived there in thirty-nine oh six Seagull Ridge Drive for thirty years. And, um, my only beef is that why was that sign allowed to like right in our face? And especially with the HUD thing, nothing against people that need a break, you know? But what about them homes right behind it there, you know, four hundred thousand dollar homes? You know, what are they supposed to do? I mean, that's going to just, it's, just doesn't fit. Just doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. And them people too can't afford cars, a lot of them, how are they going to walk to get groceries? Ride their bikes to get groceries or go to a convenience store or pick up whatever they need to get? I mean, you know, it just seems like that would make it harder on them, positioning that in that area where it is, and that's all I have to say.
I, I can't speak for the developer or why anybody would put a sign up, but that's.
My name is Janet Jada. I'm at thirty-six fourteen Old Hopper Road. We've lived in our home for over thirty years. You say that's not going to be a traffic problem. I, I'm going to tell you right now, it is a traffic problem. My dog was hit when my, my dog and I were, were jogging on Hopper Road. There's already a traffic problem. Cars drive like there's no tomorrow. They speed on those roads, especially early in the morning trying to get to work. You can't see, the sun's right in your eyes, there's no sidewalks. There's already a problem.
There's a speeding issue. I think that's something that chief can, uh, kind of address too. Okay.
I just want to put a face on this. My name is Jim West. I live on Besse and Coke. I've lived in my house since two thousand. If this were to go as HUD associated situation, I stand to lose approximately a hundred thousand dollars in equity in my home that was going to be a base for retirement in the future. I'm seventy years old now, planning on retiring soon. That's a pretty bad hit. And when I think about the hundreds of homes, the hundreds of families around me that may be affected the same way, and you do the math, there's a huge amount of money that can be lost. And I know you can't change some things about this, but I want you to understand the impact when the law allows this kind of aggressive development.
I understand the impact. I do understand the impact.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Essner, early with five thirty-three West Highland Drive. And I wrote this down. First of all, I want to say congratulations to everybody who got awards and all the volunteers and all the service people and all of you too, because I'm, this is my fourth meeting now in a row and I'm starting to see just how complicated everything is. I'm a resident, I'm a voter, I'm a landowner, and I do not understand. So I wanted to just share some of my frustrations with you so that maybe the council and the planning commission can start making some changes from a person's perspective that doesn't follow the politics. Okay, at the first commission meeting, little was said about Mr. Williams, what his plans were. Infrastructure concerns were a little bit addressed by the commission, but they weren't major concerns to the commission, but they were major concerns to the participants. Um, we were provided an overlay of the divisions with eighteen acres to R3. We were told that developers can change their minds and develop what they want as long as it meets zoning restrictions. Now, that was a concern right there that.
That's true of any, that's true of any zoning designation.
Okay, but that's a frustration for me, you know, that they can say one thing and then they can change it. And this is nothing to do with Mr. Williams. He seems to be of, of high integrity and, you know, he was there. And that Mr. Williams chose not to share his plans with residents. However, during that meeting, we talked about unsafe roads, blind turns, um, buffer zones, which we were told we could not do, school capability, spot zoning, three-story buildings. Okay. Now, at the council meeting minutes, um, and this is a quote, that Mayor Bob Fox spoke about the ordinance related to the public hearing. He stated that it was only considering if the R3 zoning land use wasn't appropriate zoning for the area, the concerns with infrastructure improvements and other impacts would be reviewed later. But their zoning comes before planning, that's what I see. And it's like, we're all concerned with the planning and the infrastructure. And yet we're asked to rezone and we didn't want to rezone. We didn't really know what was going in there. And it wasn't until the middle of the meeting that Mr. Williams said it was an over fifty-five retirement. And it wasn't until at the end of the meeting that you yourself told us that it was a retirement community and it was fitness center and pools and all this other, which actually sounded pretty good to me. We weren't given that information. You know, and I wasn't able to make an informed decision because of that. And I don't know the ins and outs about politics. Now, now at the council meeting, not the council meeting, at the meeting that I was invited to a couple of weeks ago with the city manager, and I really appreciate that, when Mr. Williams said he was going to build HUD housing. And the city said, well, there's nothing in the zoning. You know, I was like, why isn't there anything in the zoning? There should be restrictions on the size and quality of the houses, I think. And, and I really have nothing against HUD housing at all, as long as the property in the, you know, is maintained and the, the housing is maintained, et cetera, et cetera. But again, there's no infrastructure, there's no grocery stores, there's no gas stations, uh, there's no laundromats. And most importantly, there is not a park within walking distance. So I would just like, and I really respectfully like to ask the commission and the council to start really putting, you know, all these concerns that were raised within the last few weeks, maybe you could start working on them and adding them into the ordinances. I know that's probably very difficult to do, I don't know, but to me it's very important.
Thank you. I will tell you that, you know, developers are, are different. You know, some developers are very open about what they want to do, about the plans they're going to have. And they have pictures of it and they do all sorts of things and they want to meet with neighbors and do that. Some developers don't. And the city really has no control over that. And as far as, you know, uh, as long as that falls within R1 and it, and it's single family homes, the city has no, no rule that they have to be two thousand square feet or eight hundred square feet. Doesn't make any difference, as long as they fall within the R1 guideline. Now, you do have situations where people will develop a subdivision and within that subdivision, they'll form their own guidelines. And they may say, well, your garage has to be on the side, cannot be in the front. May have to be twenty-four hundred square feet, may have to be two thousand square feet. Those are codes that are developed within a subdivision entity itself that the city really has no control over. Those are local things that are done within a subdivision. As far as size of home and whatnot, as long as it's a single family home and it meets city codes and he has proper setbacks and there are streets and sidewalks and sewers done to city codes, then we as a city, any government entity, has no control over exactly what goes there as long as it's built within codes and the law.
Mr. Mayor.
You can't, you, well, what do you want to change in the codes?
Mayor, I think something else important to emphasize is that after, you know, when a city is considering the subdivision of land, we have no say in whether those individual lots are become owner occupied, rental homes, HUD homes. In fact, the city has nothing to do with HUD whatsoever and we have absolutely no knowledge of what, what properties in the city are HUD or not HUD. So that is not something that is for the city to decide. I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
True.
My name is Kevin Walters. I live on Valley Du Lake. And I apologize, this is my first venue into the conversation and I hope we're still having a conversation.
We are.
But I want to, I want to just first off concur with regards to traffic concerns. As the planning and zoning commission at my house, I did not approve that route for my wife and child to walk based on the, some observations we had when we initially moved in. Now, we don't have the tenure of a lot of the folks behind us. We were very blessed to get the house that we got three years ago and we've kind of grown into the community. So I apologize for not knowing a good number of you. But the one question that I have, and I just want to touch base on some things that I've heard while I've sat here today. The gentleman here in his presentation for discussing some amendments to the planning and zoning and to the ways that they operate, had mentioned that when they were regarding concerns for subdivisions, he was saying, well, here's some basic things that, that just can't happen. It can't be this, it can't be that, it can't adversely affect the areas next to it. So my question for you in hearing this gentleman speak earlier and the man sitting right next to him is wouldn't a property value loss in, in the significant level of a hundred of thousands of dollars be an adverse effect? That's my question.
Well, I would agree. If you live in an area of the city and someone has an R1 development and they build a lower quality home and a bunch of them, it could affect property value.
Okay, so my, my question is, this was voted and approved, but pre-approved, right? Obviously, we don't have the plat. The guy says he's just done this so that he can go his direction that he originally wanted. He wanted to get everyone's attention, he's got it, right? And he wants us to reconsider the original. I, I get all of those things, but my question in regards to planning and zoning saying, hey, we have nine, uh, nine approved, zero opposed with two abstentions, uh, to approve the record, the non-record plat. I'm sorry, preliminary.
Not a plat.
So why would it be approved if it's fairly obvious that with the developer advertising as such, with regards to the sign some of the other folks have already mentioned too, that this could have a high potential to have an adverse effect?
He's not changing the, he's not changing the zoning.
What was approved was just a preliminary plat within that R1 designation that already exists.
Okay, I got you.
Okay.
So what happens after this? And I do apologize for asking that question, but what's the next step?
After tonight, I mean, we have to approve the preliminary plat by law because it falls within the R1 guidelines. It gives the developer the right to go in and move that land around however he see fits, as long as it fits within the, you know, the proper guidelines, uh, and prepare to build a subdivision. Now, after meeting with some of the residents in, in Scott's office, you know, I think he, he heard some people say that, you know, maybe my original plan might have been better than what this plan was. And maybe that was his intent from the beginning. That doesn't affect us at all.
Sir, I, I certainly don't want to speculate as to what.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to speculate, but I'm just saying, he is going to bring back another plan, it sounds like, with rezoning, which is similar to his original plan as far as building a, uh, an R3 park where it has, uh, duplexes or townhomes together with, with a clubhouse and whatever else it contains. I didn't look at the whole thing. Uh, and then the other lots will be bigger lots with bigger homes.
Very well, so before he builds a home.
Before he builds a home.
That adverse condition has to be considered, yes? And does the council?
There's been a lot of discussion about Old Hopper Road and the fact that it's blacktop, it's got sharp curves, it has no sidewalks. And, you know, in my mind, with all the residential areas out there that go out toward Twin Lakes and go, I mean, it, I look at as being a future TTF project to do something with that road in concert with special road district. You can't straighten the road out, but you can make it wider, put in curbs, put in sidewalks. I mean, you have to put in sidewalks to do something with the street, that's federal law and that we have to. So.
Before he builds a house, that adverse condition would be considered, yes?
No, the, the property that's under consideration tonight is already zoned R1. So he's only, we're talking about splitting the acreage into lots for single family homes.
So when you're handed a building permit with a plan to approve, put a building on that lot and it's clear that that particular property would have an adverse effect on the area?
No, the zoning is in place. So as long as he meets all the development standards and complies with all the building codes, he receives a building permit and can build a home on that lot.
So the city's not considering the property value loss or did those things as an adverse condition?
The city can't do that.
That's only in the event of a zoning change that those things are considered. Right now, there is no zoning change being asked.
Eric, would you clarify this? Yeah, I would.
You're just, you're just fine. The, uh, the, the consideration of an adverse impact comes when there is a zoning change, not when there is a subdivision preliminary plat approval or record plat approval. So to the extent that it may have been indicated that, that adverse impact situation was considered with a subdivision plat, that's not entirely accurate. It is when there is a request for a zoning change. Then they consider the adverse impact on the surrounding properties.
So then when he comes back to apply for a zoning change, this other plant, adverse conditions can be considered, correct? Now, then, am I understanding that this is still going to be a fifty-five plus senior to development?
Part of it. Part of it. I haven't seen the, I haven't seen the plan yet. The original plan called for part of it to be R3, which is, uh, basically duplexes like townhomes connected. We saw pictures of the proposed and they look like nice homes. They look like homes that are in several other places in the community. Uh, the other R1 part, uh, he wanted to make the lots a little bigger and build bigger homes.
Now, in consideration of what you call adverse conditions or adverse effect, is that going to be defined as effects on property values in other situations or entirely out of the consideration of property value changes?
It's pretty broad. It's pretty broad and I think it could, I think that kind of thing could be considered in a.
Will commit to consider.
In a rezoning. In a rezoning application. In a rezoning application, that kind of thing can be considered.
Invite your.
And I'll say it louder if you want me to. It can be considered in a rezoning application.
But understand, it would only be the portion that he's.
But understand, it would only be the portion that he's rezoning.
I understand.
So, the portion that is existing, the R1, would not be considered. It would be in that portion, yes, you can absolutely consider that. Absolutely.
And what percentage of the property is R1 or R3?
I don't know, we haven't seen...
It'll depend on what he comes back with, I mean...
We don't know what that is yet. But it will not be at the next meeting because the next meeting is before the planning and zoning meeting.
I think it's important, though, to remember what Scott said earlier, and that is the rezoning request, just any plan that he puts forward is not, he's not legally bound to that. And I'm not trying to suggest that he is not being truthful, I'm just saying there's no guarantee developers can change their minds about what they intend to do.
I'm seeking this question for education. I apologize if I should already know. Is he the only one that can request a rezoning of that area?
He's the owner, no. Only the owner of the property can request that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you may.
My name is Deborah Mitchell Braxton. I live at 3734 Old Hopper Road. I've lived in that area for over 30 years. And the thing that concerns me the most, I don't have any problem with diverse housing, but all this is they kept so secretive about what's gonna be done with the field that I look across every day of my life. And what concerns me, the last meeting we were at, is that, yes, as the gentleman said, our property will be developed. And every day I work two jobs to pay the city a cape for property tax on my property. And you're telling me I'm gonna look across the street, and there's gonna be properties of lesser value that won't have to pay the same property tax I pay. I own my house, I own my land. So, you're gonna bring in houses, and I wish the subdivision would have known this, that we could have put restrictions on what to be put in those fields and in our entire subdivisions. I wish we'd have told that upfront, as when Mr. Clark sold us the land. He told us that that would be a faulty subdivision, that whole area, even if they revented you hopper. And like I said, the other men with the deer. But it concerns me that somebody can just come into our city. Typically, in this city, I've lived here all my life, you drive around, you see duplexes, you see apartments, you see certain houses in certain locations. And like several people said, I work with disabled and disadvantaged people. How in the world they're gonna get from the west side of town to the other side of town where they need to go? Because the majority of them will not have transportation, and the Cape Transit charges $7 to $20 to take a cab from where we live to anywhere. So, whatever the developer's thinking, he's not gonna get a lot of people to live in those houses because first and foremost, they're not gonna have transportation. There's no parks, there's no grocery stores, there's nothing out there. You'd have to have a car to get to where you're going. And like I said earlier, I'd just like to look out in the neighborhood that I've lived in over half of my life to quality homes. I mean, he could just build a bodega across the street and pull horses in there. So, I mean, I live with the deer every day, and that's my problem. It's not funny, when you have 30 deer in your yard, and he excavates that land, I'll probably have 60 deer. I have to worry about my life. My kids like coming up the driveway when the deer is just jumping. Hopper, I walk every day. There's nowhere to walk on Hopper or Old Hopper. And to say you're gonna build 38 homes, and you're not gonna do any more street renovations, that's a joke. Now, earlier in the year, there was a proposal to build habitat for humanity houses on the other part of Old Hopper. But apparently, somebody fought the good public, and that didn't happen because none of those look like habitat houses on the other side of Old Hopper. So, all I'm saying is that if he's trying to build houses, I don't appreciate our property being devalued. And if it is, I'd like to get a big cut in my property tax. If you want us to devalue your property, I know Dr. Fox even made a statement that our property will be devalued. I'm not a fool, I have 30 degrees. And I know what we paid to build the house on that property, and I know what it should sell for. And I know what's gonna happen, and the gentleman said, "I'm appreciating it, because I go into retirement and have to lose what we put into that house for 30,000 years, in that whole area." So, he needs to think about what he's putting across the street from us, you know, because it's just not fair.
Dale Wardner, 815 Hopper Room. So, Ms. Braxton, where was that sign located at?
I was in that valley, and I didn't take that sign down. I went a few feet, but I was in a house I was told...
The point I'm gonna make, I'm not gonna rehash all this today, guys. I agree with almost 100% of what we've heard here. Everyone of my neighbors here, and you know it, we're going through this for nothing. If we had known what was going on before we walked into here, right? So, here we are, we're taking your time, we're taking my time, and you're saying, "Well, you don't have to tell us about it." Granted, I'm gonna lose 100 grand. You don't have to tell me about it? Come on, guys. All I'm saying is, it's not fair to anybody in this room, or you. You guys make the choice. It's not up to me, it's legal. Tell me where it's at. That's all I have to say.
My name is Dan Ollinghaus. I live on Old Hopper Road at 3719. As I'm here, I'm not here to address the council members, I'm actually here to address the developer. My beef is not about what's gonna be and what's not gonna be. As you explained, quite certainly, there are legal obligations that you must protect the city and not have it sued. I have lived at Old Hopper Road since 2008. My wife has lived at that home since 2000. The neighborhood is full of friendly and polite people. Our neighbors that run every morning, all of them wave hello or smile, they ask how you're doing. Most of the neighborhood are the kind of people who will open the door and are polite stretch of strangers. You know, like door-to-door salespeople, religious people that come and ask you to welcome them to their church, and even publicly elected peoples come on our street and knock on our doors because they know what they're going to be welcomed into. Most of us would have offered this developer to sit in our home, have a cup of coffee, and we would talk. As we started this meeting with prayer, we do believe that we are brothers keeper of dental. So, my question would be... Excuse me. The reason for explaining about our wonderful and unique neighborhood is because when you purchased that property, you became our neighbor. No one in that neighborhood has closed his or her ears or thrown a tantrum like a child, stating they are not open to development of the property. All any one of your neighbors has asked is that you resent your plans and be respectful. I understand you wish to make money, and that is why you wanted to develop the land. If I invested that much money in the land, I would want to make a return on my investment because in no way, shape, or form could I afford to lose 2-plus million dollars. I can barely afford to lose $20. I want you to be successful and to have a huge return on your investment. My ask is that you draw up a plan and request for zoning with a plan, and not request for spot zoning that gives you ability to create something that can change. In closing, I would like to thank everyone in this room for putting aside your bias and opening your ears. Also, I would like you to leave with a quote from a very infamous person, Mr. Rogers, because he was wise beyond many of our ears. "If you could only sense how important you are to the lives of those you meet, how important you can be to the people you may never even dream of, there is something of yourself that you leave in every meeting with another person." So, Mr. Developer, because I don't have the pleasure to shake your hand, I do not know your name personally, will you please be our neighbor and be respectful and let us build this plane?
My name is Edward Barley. I live at 3916 Hopper Road. I would have to say that the majority of the people that are in here now are because of the drive that I went through the last three weeks to get everybody. I understand that tonight, you are going to approve the plat. You're not approving the HUD homes, you're approving the plat. What he does with the plat is up to him.
That's right.
Correct?
That's correct.
I'm gonna be as blunt as I can possibly be, all of you. We're in here because we don't like to be threatened, and that's exactly what you folks did.
We didn't threaten...
I'm not saying you, I'm saying what has happened here. Because the original plan got shot down, and I know this for a fact because I've talked to this gentleman more than once. In fact, I talked to him last night. I said, "If you want us to support your plan, show us a good show of good faith. Go down there and take down that sign." You know what he told me? "I'm not gonna take down the sign until I get what I want." That's a threat. I don't care the way, you can describe it any way you want to. This whole process has become a disaster because of the way it was handled. We are all tired of you all telling us, "We don't have to tell you this, we don't have to tell you that."
I don't think the council's ever told anybody, "We don't have to say anything to anybody." We've tried to be as open as we can.
You haven't been open.
And give you all the information?
The people that I've talked to, I passed out almost 400 of those pamphlets that I had. And the people that I talked to, half of them didn't even know what was going on. They had no clue because they weren't informed, because they didn't have to be informed. The only people that were supposed to be informed were the people that bordered.
As a council, as a council, we can't call every individual citizen in the city and tell them what's going on in the city.
No, you can't, but you can also do a better job than what you did.
We publish, we publish the agenda. These things are televised.
You published it where?
It's published on our website. It's published in the paper.
No, it's not published. And you know why it's not published in the paper?
The agenda is published in the paper 24 hours before the meeting.
But 90% of the people don't look at the paper, they look at the internet. It's not allowed to put it on the internet because it's a discrimination against that.
No, our agenda is on the internet. It's on our website.
That's what whoever I talk to in the city...
Our agenda, our agenda is posted on the website.
Your code says that you have to send letters to everybody that borders the property in question, and you have to put it in the paper. You put it in the classified section.
We did not have to, we did not have to do that for this evening because it's not a rezoning.
No, I'm talking about the original plan, and the only thing that anybody saw was this little sign down on the corner of Hopper and Hopper Road. Nobody knew what was going on. They weren't informed, nobody knew. That's the problem. There was a massive, that's what we talked about with Scott in the meeting. There was a massive amount of miscommunication on everybody's part here. That's why we're here. And then you, at the end of the meeting, lectured us.
I didn't lecture you.
What do you call it?
I just stated, I stated...
You can define it any way you want. When you scold people like schoolchildren and tell us, "Well, you just screwed up, and he has the right to do what he wants," that's a threat. Two days, three days later...
I did not mean that as a threat, and I'm sorry if you took it as a threat.
And then three days later, yeah! Three days later, a sign goes up on that property that says they're gonna put HUD houses in. And since we talked to him, he's looked at us and told us, because his plan got turned down, he's gonna go out of his way to destroy our properties. That's a threat.
I, I...
You as a city council have the right to stop that. I don't care what you, you can sit here all day long and say it's the law, that you have to approve his plat. That's a given. But you also have a say so on whether or not he puts HUD houses. And I can tell you this now, looking at every one of you, that if you allow him to put HUD houses, if one HUD house goes into that property because he doesn't get what he wants, he's acting like a child. "I didn't get what I wanted, so I'm gonna punish you." If that happens, some of you might want to start looking for a new job. And I'm being very serious, because what you've done right now, you've lost our confidence, you've lost our trust, and more importantly, you've lost our votes. We understand, we understand as a community. I've got, this has been the most invigorating experience I've ever had of finding my neighbors, looking at my neighbors. We have bonded as a community. We're adults, we understand that property is gonna be developed regardless of what we want. This isn't about losing trees or losing deer. It's about what's gonna...
Time's up. I think, I think the council understands your point. I understand your point. And I will say this, I apologize if any of you felt like that was a threat. That was not a threat. I did not mean it to sound like that. What I, what I, the point I tried to get across at the end of that meeting, you are all worried about your property values. Your property values have a much, and I still stand by this, your property values have a much higher likely of going down with a development like he's proposed than his original development.
That's a threat?
No, I'm just stating...
If we don't approve it, if we don't...
No, that's not a threat, I'm just stating a fact.
When you're basically telling us, "If we don't do this, then he's gonna do that."
I'm just stating a fact, and it's...
You guys, you guys are responsible, my dad taught me one very bellicent. You're responsible for your actions, you're responsible for the consequences of actions, but more importantly, you're held accountable. If that young man puts one HUD house into that property...
Your time is up, thank you. You've already made your point. If anybody else has any comments about the issue on the agenda tonight, I'm not gonna hear any more comments about the developer because he's not here, and we're not here to comment about the developer.
Anyway, my name's Robert Warder in 3910 Fawn Drive. Bobby Fox, you know, means Bobby Warder, because we went to school together.
That's right.
All right. I'm just getting in on this. I didn't know nothing about what was going on. A little sign down about that big. I dropped a shot at it one day, and the guy pulled a blow his horn at me. You know, "Get out of the damn way." My wife and I just put 2 bucks in our house, stripped it down, bare walls, and remodeled it. We're gonna move on next time, we're mostly all... I'm telling you, I know, I know what the house has cost, and just back then, decided to completely remodel it. But still, I work for Florida Public Service in Florida. I know about HUD housing projects. It's a housing project. That's what it is. And we seen them down there, tore up mattresses in the yard, screen doors tall, cars up on blocks. We had to go down there and three or four times a night for fights, drinking, and drugs. And if y'all live down there, it could be the same way. I respectfully, respectfully ask that we maybe try to do something about this, to help us out. We've got a nice day, ready? Y'all are living down there.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
If you'll come up here and identify yourself, please. Would you please identify yourself so for record?
I'm Joel Paydeck. I live at 3911 Hopper Road. And this is gonna surround my property to the east and to the south.
There it is.
There we go. See the buildings over this way to the edge? That is my old house, barn, shed, a couple of little buildings. And I was wondering whether we're gonna have, like, they'll be taking out this huge tree beside my house, which is a property line tree. Am I gonna have any privacy fence or anything? Do you have any ideas?
I do not know.
Because they'll be moving a lot of dirt from down in the front. There's all kinds of timber there that that church...
I can't tell you till he starts moving dirt and starts doing things, as far as that goes. I don't know.
Yeah. I'm just thinking about what's gonna happen to me up there. Am I gonna be many pearl, have to push a dresser over to get up on it to look out the window and see what's going on?
We don't, we don't know what's gonna be there yet, so that's hard to answer. I can't answer your question because I don't know what's gonna be there yet and how he's gonna lay the land out.
Is there gonna be another chance that I might get to talk to this John?
That's up to you all. We can't control you all meeting with the developer.
Okay.
I assume he plans on going to the P&amp;Z meeting.
I would assume that, like Scott said, if he wants to go before P&amp;Z next month to present any zoning change, he will be there, and you'll have an opportunity at that time.
Okay. I only have hearing in one ear, so I have missed a lot of what's going on here. This microphone don't do much. But anyway, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Any other new comments about something that's not already been said? One more?
I'm Steel Cheryl Essner, 533 West Hyler Drive. I may be the minority here, I don't know, but I do not agree with everything that's been said about the threats and all that stuff, at all. So, I don't know that that was unanimous, so please don't think that it was. And I find Mr. Waves to be an upright, seems to be a pretty honest man, who is angry. Well, my concern comes back to what I said in the very beginning. What are you doing about these gaps and these holes? What are you doing about these gaps and these holes? Because he can come back and get his rezoning and do what he wants, or anybody else, and they can change their minds, right? And he has three sort of buildings. So that problem's still there. And then as our line, he can continue to do all whatever the HUD if he wants. So there's, there's some problems here. You know, it's not either or. He could do either and. I mean, you know what I mean?
Most developers, most developers do what they say they're gonna do.
Right. And I think he will too. Yeah. And I saw his plan for the house and it looked very nice, so. Well, I didn't see the HUD, but I saw the retirement.
Okay.
Anyway, I just.
Share.
I'm Chris Loki, 3726 Old Hopper Road. And I feel like this started because the sign showed up and we just started asking questions. They were legitimate, honest, open questions. And I really would just advocate that city council members, if this happens in your, if this happens in your ward, that you take the initiative to try to get the developer and the residents in the same room. I tried to introduce myself to Mr. Williams and he said, "I know who you are. I want nothing to do with you." And that kind of, no, and I don't blame him for that at all. Because that resentment was sown through the lack of communication. And that's all I'm saying is that this sort of, we could've saved three months. I really think if we would've all gotten in the same room three months ago, he'd be breaking ground and doing what he wanna do. And I'd be happy we'd all, you know, some people may not be 100% happy, but we'd be a community and we can go beyond the ordinance to be neighborly to each other. And we can, we can do this right. I know it takes more time at the front end, but I think we would've saved time in the long run. And I'm happy to be a part of whatever solution that might look like in terms of getting resident leaders or getting anything we can do to sort of communicate more so that we can kind of just be more efficient, be neighborly with each other. And that's all I'm saying.
Teresa, thank you very much.
My name is Brad Renninger. I actually live in Ashland Courts, which is right around the corner, 3955 Red Drive. You guys are saying a lot about the HUD houses. Mr. Williams is kind of threatened, but not threatened you guys. His houses, if he does put these up, he's gonna be very strict on these people. I guarantee you that. They are not going to be running out. He is gonna take care of these houses because it is his money coming in. I'm, that's, he's not gonna let these houses be ran down. That is something that comes into, into play. Just another side of the story.
I appreciate all the comments.
Healy Fisher, 3909 Palm Drive. I wanna know if you're gonna approve this, if you're gonna step up the police force in that area and have more police presence then? Because we already have, right, since then, ours periodically. And I don't know if I speak for everybody, but I sure as hell don't want the extra crap.
All we're doing tonight is approving, is approving a preliminary plat. Period. That's it.
I'm very passionate about this. Now I'm back up here because they just said this. My fiance is in Detroit. And what she does for a living, she's a management company that deals with HUD. She deals with properties that have Section 8 assisted living. As much as I would like to agree with what the gentleman just said, that's not a fact. The assisted living, the Section 8, the government assisted programs, bring in people that we don't want in our neighborhood. I'm, I'm not making this a, say this an issue about good people, bad people, whatever. It's just.
We're kinda getting off the subject. You're, everybody's making comments about the future and we don't, nothing's built there yet. We don't know what's gonna be built there yet.
You guys, you have the influence as a city council to influence this individual to do the right thing. We want him to make his money. We understand he's gonna develop it. But you as a city council also have a lot of pull. You have a lot of sway on what people do and what they don't do.
I gotta.
You can convince him.
I don't think the council has any sway as to, on one particular developer on what he does or what he not does.
You made a comment during the last meeting that you are, you have known him for a long time.
I know who he is. I mean, I don't. I know, what I know, what I know is that when.
There's a different.
What I know is that as a developer, when he, he usually does what he says he's gonna do and he builds a pretty good home.
I understand his, his demeanor is not perfect. I've heard he's, he's a decent developer when he wants to be, but I've also heard he's got a bad bedside manner, so to speak. That's it, that's it.
We're not here, we're not here tonight. We're not here tonight to talk about the developer. We're here to talk about the preliminary plat.
I understand that. My thing is, is this, this should be a lesson to all of us, that there's a better way to do this.
I agree.
We, we all probably mismanaged this in, in, in all sorts of ways. All of us can take blame for it. All of us can look at it.
I would hope as.
The reaction that we've had.
I would hope as a developer, that, that maybe, you know, he learned a little bit about, I mean, meeting with people beforehand about doing something rather than just presenting a plan.
I just hope that you all understand that you're very passionate about our neighborhood.
I understand your passion. I understand your passion. I don't blame you a bit. But we need to get on with the meeting and so forth.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Jay Russell Becker, live at 1003 Oak Creek Court. I was informed by another developer, like, last time that R3 zoning deal got shut down, that he has to wait nine months before he can try again. Is that correct?
That is correct as far as if he submits it exactly the same. If he modifies it, it is not.
So he changes it is.
Right.
He's aware of that.
Talking about him leaving it the same.
No, he's.
I said the same zone.
Oh, same zone.
Same type of zoning.
He's aware, he's aware of that requirement and they're making the changes. Thank you.
Okay.
So he's gonna originally still try to do the original R3 and leave the other one R1?
I don't know. I have not seen it yet. I have not seen what he's proposed yet. But.
I believe what he, I believe what he has, what he has submitted meets the requirements necessary. He does not have to wait the nine months.
So he just changes it a little bit?
Yes, yes, thank you.
That's, that's the way it goes. Thank you. We'll move on to consent agenda. Eric?
Bill 18-74, an ordinance vacating in city's interest in unimproved Carruthers Avenue right of way lying between Dunkland Street to the south and New Madder Street to the north in State Cape River, Missouri. An ordinance vacating in city's interest in unimproved Carruthers Avenue right of way lying between Dunkland Street to the south and New Madder Street to the north in State Cape River, Missouri. 18-124, an ordinance vacating temporary construction, accepting a temporary construction easement from Ruth Lips for sanitary sewer main repair in the State Cape River, Missouri. Ordinance accepting a temporary construction easement from Ruth Lips for sanitary sewer main repair in the State Cape River, Missouri. 18-125, an ordinance accepting a permanent sanitary sewer easement and permanent ingress and egress easement from Maniled Better Hudson and West Con Investments LLC between Dunkland Street and New Madder Street in the State Cape River, Missouri. An ordinance vacating permanent, an ordinance accepting permanent sanitary sewer easements and permanent ingress and egress easement from Maniled Better Hudson and West Con Investments LLC between Dunkland Street and New Madder Street in the State Cape River, Missouri. 18-126, an ordinance meeting chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, State Cape River, Missouri, regarding definitions. An ordinance meeting chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, State Cape River, Missouri, regarding definitions. 18-138, a resolution adopting a complete street policy for the State Cape River, Missouri. 18-140, a resolution adopting a voluntary buyout policy for the 2018 flood buyout application for the State Cape River, Missouri, and authorizing the city manager to implement said policy and procedures.
You have before you the consent agenda with items six and nine removed. Motion made and seconded by Mr. Guard. Dan? Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Items removed from the consent agenda were item six and item nine. Item number six is a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a contract for banking services, Wooden Houston Bank, for the State Cape River, Missouri. Motion made and seconded. Some discussion?
I just asked that it be pulled, just to just hear the rationale.
Yep. Well, we were very pleased with the proposals that we got. The, the banking fees that we had previously cost about $30,000 per year. Wooden Houston has offered to do it without any fees, so that's a savings of $30,000 per year. And then they also have offered interest at 88 basis points over the treasury rates for no minimum balance. And that could've weighed up to $20,000 to $30,000 per year as well. So very, feel very good about this proposal and moving forward. We have also met with them and they can comply with all of our, our requirements necessary to, to take care of our bank.
Took the words right out of my mouth. No, I have looked through this. I had a couple of vendors call me and so I looked through it the last several hours. Actually, I was gonna say, kudos to Victor for getting a, really a sweetheart deal.
Yeah, good deal.
And, and I bid on this when I was at Regions and this is unheard of. The banks that like number two and number three on, that were number two and number three, nobody had no fees whatsoever. I mean, I mean, quite frankly, we would never bid on this.
Turn off his microphone.
97,000 deposit items on the bank annually and they're not charging anything. And then they offered, on top of that, they offered two remote capture machines for free. It's really, and it, talk about a rising rate environment to get this kind of a deal is amazing. So kudos to you for, for getting that deal done, knowing, knowing Clint and his staff. They have the infrastructure in place with, with all the staff that they have. I think it's a great decision and in good vein. The only thing I was gonna add is that with the $64,000 in merchant fees, if, I guess we're bound with RFP to let them look at it, or if you put out an RFP possibly on the merchant processing, maybe, that would be the only thing I might add. I know that there's some out in the market like Elavan and that are good rates. I don't, we might be with Elavan already though because of US Bank. But anyway, I, great job. This is a good one. Save that kind of money and, I mean, this is a $60,000 a year impact essentially.
Good. Excellent.
Great job, Victor.
Kudos to Victor.
The other item approved, pulled off the consent agenda was approval of the program. Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Sorry about that. I got carried away. We did pull off the preliminary plat of Durbin Estates.
Some move.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Please mark my vote as abstention due to conflict of interest financially.
Got that? Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Hold.
What?
I just had another comment, question.
Go ahead.
And.
I figured after all the discussion, no one had anymore.
Well, there was a lot and a lot got covered. Just one very, very general question. Molly, perhaps you can answer. In terms of a preliminary plat, is the developer, any developer, notice, you know, egress and whatnot, is, is, is a developer bound to those points or what's the?
In terms of the street configuration and egress and egress? Yes. I mean, we have improvement plans that will coincide with the.
The city works along with during the progress. Gotcha. Okay. And then, I mean, obviously the traffic issue is a big concern for people and I'm not, I don't wanna go into it, you know, any more than you probably already have, Scott, except to say, can you just very, very briefly, quickly, talk about maybe referring to Bloomfield Road or in general, what you might envision if there are traffic concerns that come up in the future with the added population out there? How that might look? And I know that's totally hypothetical, but could you just speak to that?
Yes. It, it, it is a difficult improvement because it's, it's very narrow and it's, and the ditches are very steep. And so if you look at improving, you're, you may well be looking at, at some kind of stormwater, underground stormwater to do that. But it can be done. It's a matter of how much it would be and, and how much the special road district would be willing to participate. But I do, we do have a good relationship and in that meeting had a good conversation with Mark Phillips about doing that and very willing to do so. So I think it's something that we will monitor and keep an eye on. And I'm sure the folks here will, will do the same and let us know when they, they have concerns and we also monitor accidents as well. So that's, I don't know if that addresses exactly what you.
No, it does. Again, I've, I've heard huge concerns about that very issue. So I, I was just.
One of the things.
Not many people left here to, to hear about it, but.
One of the things that when, when new hopper was developed, it was kind of developed as an alternate to the, to the windy old hopper and coggie. So it was, it was really developed to have a safe exit onto Mount Auburn and to have the signal there. So it's really trying to draw traffic into that safer road. So that, that might be one thing to add as well.
Well, and along with that, if it's determined, there's a process in place for determining perhaps an added traffic signal or some kind of.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right. That's, that's really all. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New ordinances. Bill number 18-133, an ordinance renaming Henry Avenue to Henry Street in the city of Cape, Missouri.
So moved.
Motion moved by Mr. Essex, second by Mr. Guard. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill number 18-135, an ordinance amending Schedule F of Section 26-247 of the City Code establishing no parking anytime along a portion of Rust Avenue in the city of Cape, Missouri.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Guard. Seconded by Dan. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify. Actually, yeah, I do have a question on this. What's the reasoning for this again, Scott?
The county requested, they have a new juvenile center down there.
Okay.
And people were parking on the street and then walking up through. And they provided more off-street parking and so they really would like to encourage people to park off-street security and other things.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 18-136, an ordinance authorizing directing the issuance, sale and delivery of special obligation bonds, Series 2018, for the city of Cape, Missouri, and approving certain documents and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Guard. Seconded by Dan. Any discussion?
Glad to see you just going. Projects. There's some good projects.
True. A lot of good projects there.
And everything else in there.
Stormwater and, yep. Me, me being new to the council, just asking a question. These ordinances in the past regarding these special bonds, we've always used vague language like approving certain documents and certain other actions just to give kinda. Yes. Okay. It's gotta be a little broad. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 18-137, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a municipal agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for bridge work over Cape LaCory Creek and Cape, Missouri.
Second.
Motion by Robbie, seconded by Ryan. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I ended up closing the trail for two to three weeks.
Two or three weeks?
Yeah.[1782.58]
Okay. Not much of a choice there. An ordinance amending Section 25-1227 of the Code, an ordinance in the City of Cape River, Missouri regarding preliminary plats.
So moved.
Motion by Robbie.
Second.
Second by Ryan. Any discussion?
I wanna say something, I think this is a good sign, and I hope that we have many more changes like this in the future, because it's more, to be more efficient in, in your department, Alex, so just be eating on Eric's door, so that you guys can have a lot to talk, so, but, kudos.
So just so I'm clear, after tonight, issues like tonight, this preliminary plat approval won't come to this meeting?
Okay. No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
That is incorrect.
Well, okay, so tell me what this is.
That's wishful thinking.
It was discussed in his presentation.
Okay, I, I thought we were jumping the gun a little bit.
Now, this one wouldn't be, I think it is one of the things that he said with, after tonight, I am...
Maybe I didn't read that bit of information.
The minor developments issue that you...
No, this is where, where they, currently it requires them to have a trust. So it requires them to have that trust, and, and then they end up setting up a subdivision deal. This, if, if an individual person wanted to do it, they could do it. We can choose now the vehicle they use, rather than it being said what they have to use. Okay, sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to confuse everybody.
Basically, it's to establish an entity or a person that would take care of common areas that were set out in a subdivision.
That's the one.
And we would like to move toward...
Yeah, okay. Sorry, Alex, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to jump the gun on you there.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. As far as, we have no appointments, other business. We do need to have a closed session tonight to discuss issues listed in RS Missouri Section 16-021, not limited to legal actions, cause of legal action, litigation, leasing, purchasing, or sale of real estate, hiring, firing, disband personnel issues, or comfortable prison communication with attorneys.
So moved. Move to adjourn in regular meeting? Second.
Motion move to adjourn, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now we go to close session. Go ahead. Well, we did. I don't, you know, I don't know how else.
Our, our agendas are, have been...